I'd like to call to order the regular town council meeting for Wednesday, October 26th. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mike Aurelio.
Here.
Brian Blazak.
Present.
Wayne Pondinas.
Present.
Michael Schilling.
Here.
Gerald Swett.
Here.
Joe Wizwadi.
Present.
David Westland.
Present.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
Okay, we have a quorum. Number four is the approval of the minutes. You have before you the regular council meeting for minutes for October 28th, the regular meeting minutes for September 28th, and the special council meeting on October 12th. Questions or comments? I'm sorry, I missed number three, public comment, my favorite part. Let me go back, I'm sorry, public comment. Michael Bovat, please come forward, state your name and address, and if you could, keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Thank you, excited to be here. Michael Bovat, 9291 West 103rd Place. So let's clear the air. I want to address the corrupt three, Swett, Aurelio, and Blazak. Corruption is dishonesty by people in power.
Mr. Bovat.
Swett and his cohorts lied to the town council in November of 2021.
Mr. Bovat.
Yes.
We will have no slanderous comments during public comment.
Yes, and this is a public comment. This is America, the United States of America.
You're still not allowed to slander.
I'm not slandering.
Yes, you are.
I'm saying what was written in the park board, what was written in the Northwest Indiana Times newspaper, and I'm going to rebut what you said into paper. Can I do that?
Not if it's slanderous.
It's not slanderous.
What I heard was slander.
Okay, it was just comments. So, let's start the clock again. The town council in November of 2021 and again in January of 2022 endorsed the park board, said we were doing great work. But after just three park board meetings with Mike Aurelio, the park board was disbanded by Swett, Blazak, and Aurelio. Swett said in the Times newspaper that Aurelio had been disrespected because he couldn't speak whenever he wanted. That's why Swett, Aurelio, and Blazak disbanded the park board. He wasn't treated the way he liked. Here is an example of how Swett runs the town council meetings. He makes a motion to disband the park board, but he never communicated to the other town council members, so the ordinance couldn't be passed. Town Councilman Wayne Pondinas stated, "I think everybody needs to look at this, the ordinance, and understand it because you're pulling it out of your folder now." "How can we vote on this?" Pondinas asked at Wednesday's meeting. "This is typical of a lot of our meetings. We get paperwork handed to us to last second, and then Swett wants us to vote on it." The park board knows how Town Councilman Pondinas feels. Swett's never once communicated that there was an issue with the park board. Good leadership would have tried to resolve an issue, not Swett's. Real leaders would have tried and not disbanded a highly functioning park board. They would have tried to coach them up, but not Swett's. Swett said in Northwest Indiana Times, "My concerns with the park board started last year when they started working on some of the bigger projects. My ideals were kind of dismissed, and I was disappointed with that. We, the town council, weren't getting no information on what was happening with the park board, and we did not know about the projects until they were completed." Ambiguous accusations with no merit and slanderous, Mr. Swett.
Okay, your three minutes are up.
How could Swett, who is on the town council, not know what's going on? Our park board meetings are live, taped for viewing. Swett has a town councilman he approved, but Swett doesn't communicate with him. But Swett doesn't communicate with Mr. Pondinas.
Mr. Bovat.
Because he has a s-
Mr. Bovat.
I'm reading from the newspaper.
Your time is up.
You had to restart, you interrupted me.
Time is up.
I can see my three minutes to Mike Bovat.
You can't do that.
This is-
Allowed to. Next speaker, please. Have a seat.
Yes.
Mr. Bovat.
Together, we can make a difference for our community.
Have a seat, Mr. Bovat.
We can make a difference for our community. This is your failed leadership.
Have a seat, Mr. Bovat.
And you were going to be transparent. I am taking my seat.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you for this opportunity to speak, although it was really unfortunate the way you handled it.
Next speaker. Next speaker, Joe Gomezdego.
I hope this is not part of my three minutes. I want to hand over a letter to you.
Okay.
I want to be sure that it gets into the minutes.
Okay.
I do respect that we do have some kind of decency in this whole process, and especially in the town of St. John. This letter is addressed to the town of St. John Council, town manager, and the clerk. Public comments for the town council meeting 10/26/22. It is my understanding that this evening, Dan Durnack, a good friend of mine, will receive recognition for his supposed effort in bringing A R P A funds to St. John. As a resident and taxpayer of St. John, we protest this alleged recognition award to Dan Durnack. It is clearly a political, pre-election stunt. Bear with me for a second. And once again, reflects the hypocrisy of the Republican Party. Let me explain to you why. This $250,000 comes not from the county general fund, but our money is appropriated from the American Rescue Plan, proposed by the Biden administration and passed by the Congress. The funds from this legislation were designed to assist communities throughout the United States to recover financially from this terrible impact of the pandemic and the toll it took on the budgets of the municipalities that had to struggle to cover the cost of the response to the pandemic. Ironically, of the 11 representatives from the state of Indiana to Congress, only two supported this legislation. One Congressman Frank Mervan and Democratic Congressman Andre Carson from Indianapolis. All nine Republican representatives voted no, including Senator Young and Braun, both of whom Mr. Durnack supports as chairman of the Lake County Republican Party. Furthermore, not one Republican in Congress voted in favor of this legislation. But they are the first ones to take credit when the money is doled out. If anyone should receive credit, it is Congressman Mervan. Mr. Durnack, who again I respect and I like very dearly, and I hope he has some decency to reject a trophy that's not truly deserved, Mr. Durnack conducted in taking credit in shameful and hypocritical way. Mr. Durnack deals with several Democratic county councilmen as a report in attached article is also shameful. The question is, after all this, who would possibly vote for Dan Durnack after this process is made? I request that you thoroughly think it out before you actually issue this award to Mr. Durnack. I like him, but I don't think it's well worth it.
Thank you, sir.
Make sure it's put on the record.
Thank you, Joe. Tony Medidaro.
Good evening, Tony Medidaro, 9754 Rosewood Drive. Lots of passion going on here. I'll try to be brief. Recently, in public discourse, it came to my attention that a councilman had inefficient access to some financial records, invoices, and such. And I'm not quite sure if it's operational in nature or software in nature. From speaking with people, it sounds like it could be a combination of both. Basically, it was actually Councilman Aurelio wanted to review some invoices. In my personal opinion, for this town council or any future town councils, I really don't care who it is, who's in this position. As far as I'm concerned, as a council, your primary job, as far as I'm concerned, is the management, oversight, and planning and conservatorship of our finances. I think that it's absolutely paramount that any one of you be able to review in detail our finances, including invoices or anything, efficiently. You know, I've run, ran a business for quite a while, and I can go back 15 years before I was not able to call up my bookkeeper or accountant and say, "Hey, I want to see the invoices for the last six months," and have them sent to me digitally within an hour, let alone a day or weeks. And I understand that the current process required for them to be reviewed in person in an office off this person's site. Each of you should have access to this information. So if we don't have a system or software that will allow for this, or procedures as to how things are handled internally to get any of you things that you're authorized to see and want to review, you know, we're about to get into likely significantly tougher economic times. The management and watching of our finances in real time and as invoices come in are going to become increasingly more important. I think that is something that is worthy of the town to put some effort behind exploring software and procedural options that work for everybody. I know that they can get quite costly, but you can also do add-ons and different things. However it gets done, moving forward, and I'll just leave with this, because I think this is important to think about for a town as a whole. If we view our town- Thank you for your time. I've had it, I'm good. That's all I wanted to say.
I apologize that the crowd is so unruly.
It's fine, thank you.
I've got the stopwatch. Bill Purcell. Bill Purcell. I did.
You know, there's so much clownship going on here, I don't even know where to start. You're the town council president. Why haven't you sanctioned Mike Aurelio over his treatment to our treasurer?
Your name and address, please, for the record.
I'm sorry, 86 Fortinetta Fairway Drive, here in town.
Bill Purcell.
That's correct.
Okay.
You're the town council president. Why haven't you sanctioned Mike Aurelio over his treatment of our treasurer time and time again? He entered the clerk's treasurer's office back in August and behaved like a nut and frightened and intimidated all the staff. Police reports were made. I've seen them. I know what he did and said. Why haven't you removed him from all the committees and commissions you've got him on? He should be sitting out in the hallway right now, waiting for reelection, that he's not going to get. Why is the town council approving minutes from two years ago? You've already been sued twice over access to minutes and things. I don't get it. I guess you didn't learn. You disbanded the park board just to seize power, not for any other reason. That's all it was about. We found out through a FOIA request that you lied, Jerry, concerning the origins and the administration of the town Facebook page. You got busted, you got caught. So you have no credibility, zero. Dan Durnack, you want to honor him? This guy's in bed and made deals with corrupt Lake County politicians. We all know that. But you want to bring him in here and support him and give him a little pat on the head? You hijacked and canceled and paid for the event that was a paid-for event in the park in favor of holding your own political event in its place? That was shameful behavior. You hired an engineering firm that has two employees on three of our town boards. Gee, no corruption here. Jerry, you show a history of poor decision-making in hiring three town managers, and the one you have now has no high school diploma, no college education, and you're paying him, what, $111,000 a year? The clerk has a degree. She doesn't make that kind of money, far less. You know, I just, I just don't know what to think about you and your decision-making. It's all about power and money with you, the town be damned. There's no other excuse for this kind of behavior and decision-making. You're in bed with developer John Lawton. I've seen the pictures, now you two chumming it up, having drinks in old Mikey's basement over there, when the whole town has been against Lawton for the last five years that I know of. Apparently you two are buddies with him. You've worked behind the scenes to bring apartment communities to St. John, even though you promised residents when you ran for office, Jerry, that you would not support that type of housing here in town. You told me to my face personally, because I asked you, right over here in the library. The police department asked for a new police dog. You told them to start a GoFundMe page, really? How about you start a GoFundMe page for your reelection campaign? The police department asked you for LPR, LPR mobile cameras, you didn't give it to them. You've been running a dirty campaign for reelection. I hope the residents turn out in great numbers. I hope they bring torches, tar, feathers, and run you out of town on a rail.
Time is up. Thank you. Billy Manassopoulos.
Bill Manassopoulos, 10011 Parrish Avenue. First part was, was going to be a couple of questions on the answers we got from the shops on 96th. I think it's been two months and we still don't have an answer. That's a little disappointing. I can echo a couple of the other individuals that came up here with the recognition that Councilman Durnell was going to get. Councilman Durnell isn't even our county district councilman, and here we are, you know, and we're going to bring him, well, give him a pat on the back for everything that he was doing. My question is, did any of this part happen? And I don't know if you read the news article about the wheeling and dealing. Are we, you know, bringing him in here so we can take a little weight off that subject? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now we will go on to number four, which is the approval of the minutes. Okay, so you have before you the October 28th, 2020 minutes, the September 28th, 2022 minutes, and the October 12th, 2022 minutes. Questions or comments on, I'm sorry, questions or corrections?
I just request if you're going to approve these, not to do them all three in a row. I was not here for the first, the 2020, I was not on the council. I'd ask you to separate those for approval.
Okay. So do I have a motion for the October 28th, 2020 minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, is there support for that?
My second, but why is it getting on here tonight?
Joe, any idea? Can you explain that?
Type four, or is it actually from 2020?
The minutes were not approved. When they were requested, it was discovered that they were not approved at the time.
Are we all caught up on the minutes now?
Should be.
I mean, for everything, for all boards, all everything.
As far as I'm aware, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a mo, I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. It is four to zero with one abstain. Minutes for September 28th, 2022, regular meeting. Do you have a motion for, to approve those?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. And you have the special town council minutes from October 12th, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, is there support for that?
My second.
Thank you, Wayne. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. Item number five, public hearing has been canceled. We move on to the presentation. Six A, which is our ward redistricting. Jack Woods, please.
Good evening. Again, I'm Jack Woods, a project analyst with the Veritas Group. I wanted to follow up from the meeting about a month ago where I presented the three options for the town's redistricting. Wanted to receive feedback, answer any questions, and then talk about next steps. I think Jason is going to pull up my presentation. It's mostly the same. Jason, if you want to skip to, I think, slide nine, we can talk about the first option and if there's any feedback there. One more, sorry, that's the current words. So this is option one, which was shared at the last meeting. It has a total deviation of 3.78%. Again, our goal is to be under 10%, which would be in compliance with existing statutes, so we are good there. I have gotten word from Joe that this may be the preferred option based on council input and barring any changes this evening, the one that we would move forward with in the final updated ordinance and legal descriptions will be drafted for. We can take a look at the other two, though, still, to refresh everyone's memory. This, the second option here, a little bit different to the northeast, and then south it goes, I believe that's Ward Three, we go a little bit more west, and this, our deviation here is 5%, so still under 10%, but not quite as balanced as our, as our first option. And then finally here, option three, a total deviation of 2.19%. It is pretty evenly distributed north and south among each of the three wards. So I guess I'll pause here for a second. Are there any questions, comments since the last meeting?
No questions, comments? I guess not.
Okay, so if we can go back to the first option. Yep, there we go. It sounds like this is what is preferred by council. So the next step would be, I think we're going to have a reading this evening of the draft ordinance. I will draft legal descriptions that reflect these boundaries, and at the meeting in November, we will do a second and final reading, and then this will be passed as the town's new election wards. So, Joe, Dave, anything else that you want me to add there? Great.
Actually, I kind of prefer this because it allows for growth for all three wards to the south. As this, as the town grows, all three of the wards can grow. Otherwise, we're going to get the other one, and one of them showed landlocked on one of the wards, and so I like this setup better, plus it keeps me in my own ward, so.
Yeah. I think the priority is balance, and it does a good job of that, and then conveniently also allows for some of the future growth. So maybe the next 10 years, or 10 years from now, when you have to go through this process and review again, the, the boundaries may not shift quite as much, so I think that's positive as well with this one. I'll stick around for the reading, but that's all that I have today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B is Mr. John Cannon.
How are you, council?
Good evening.
I've been to a lot of council meetings in my lifetime, and I love the spirited feedback from the, from the residents. That's cool. Don't know if I always agree, but I don't know that much about it, so I can't say too much. I'm here from the Attorney General's Office. Todd Raketa has put together a, a group of individuals to go around the state and to explain what his office actually does and what we can do for municipalities and what we can do for our residents. First, our, I want to tell you a quick little story, if, if you don't mind. When you get south of Route 30, things change a little bit. I was going to Fowler, Indiana, not long ago, and I stopped at Dollar General to get a Dr. Pepper, and you can tell I probably drank too many of those. But there was a young lady at the register bringing out a big bundle of toilet paper, and she had two children with her, and she complained that the price had gone up from the last time she had purchased it, and come up to be 96 cents short. So I went ahead and said, "Ma'am, I'll go ahead and take care of the dollar, don't worry." And she said, "Thank you very much." And then when she got to the door, she waited, and I went, "Oh, boy. You know, what did I do? What did I, what did I stir up here?" And she said, "Sir, I just want to thank, thank you again, and every time my family uses this paper, we'll think of you." So when you get, when you get south of 30, things get pretty lightened up and pretty, pretty cool. So we are south of 30 here, and I'm glad to be here, so thank you all.
You're welcome.
Our, our Attorney General is working hard on robo-calls. We just announced a couple of weeks ago, stopping 1 billion calls from coming into the United States because of 23 Attorney Generals, and he is one of them. Finally, we're able to get all 52 Attorney Generals, two from territories and the rest of the states, to stop the 8 billion phone calls that come into our phone system each year from overseas. Asking the FCC to, to look at that, and at this point, they are taking it up, so that's good news for all of us on all these spam and potential spam phone calls on our cellphones, and for those folks that still may have a landline. So our Attorney General promised that on day one, and he's been working on it ever since, so I wanted to give you an update on that. Most of you probably know, and I see we've got our state reps here with us today, Michael, he, sometimes those guys, those legislators, and those folks pass laws that we may not understand as a municipality or how to put those into, into place. So we have an advisory board that town manager or the county attorney can send in, asking how do we implement this particular law or this rule, this regulation passed by the legislator. And we, we promise to get back to you within 30 days of that, so you can present that at your next meeting. So if you have those difficulties, I'm going to leave my card with you. You can run that, run it through, through me or directly to the office, however you might, might need to do it that way. So another thing that we have, we're trying to educate folks on is the Indiana Constitution. So we have this little pocket one here that I want to leave with, with the clerk treasurer to keep for the residents. Because the Indiana State Constitution is changing, not very often, but there are some amendments and things and some word changes throughout time here, but we think it's important for, for municipality folks know what the Constitution says. Maybe, I was on the city council in Portage for eight years, and I never read it once, but we said we promised that we were going to uphold that, right? So shame on me, but we have one here for you, so you can check that all out. One of the big things that our office does is we put out recalls once every month, and we'd like to ask the clerk treasurer or the IT, I'm assuming you're IT, right? Front computer, probably the guy. We'd like to have a link to our website on recalls once a month. We put out recall notices of safety recalls, and you can put that on your website, so folks that go to your website can check that recall once a month, and we put it out there. Just not too long ago, there was a protective vest for police officers that were on that, was on that list, that was sold to, to a, to a community in southern Indiana, so that was helpful for, for those folks. Last but not least, and I won't keep too much more of your time, last but not least is unclaimed property. I was in Hobart a few months ago, and I was presenting unclaimed property information, and I always put, I put this last now, because I used to talk about this first and hand this out. Well, the fire chief found 1,360 bucks and commandeered my whole entire presentation because they were so excited about that the, that the fire department found some leftover grant money that was put into unclaimed property in the, in the state. So there are $750 million in this fund. We add 75 to 100 items a week, so it may sound kind of corny to everyone, but please check unclaimed property once a week. You just never know when something may pop in there for you. You may ask what unclaimed property is. After three years, a bank or an insurance company or NIPSCO that may owe you money back can't get that money to you, after three years, it goes to the, to the state to try to find you or try to get that money to you. After 25 years, boy, if Mike, if we could shorten that, Mike, if you could help us out. But after 25 years, the state actually gets that money. Reason why I say if we shorten it down, it would kind of maybe press some folks into checking it out more often and maybe getting some of that money out of that 750 million. checking it out more often and maybe getting some of that money out of that $750 million bank account. That's huge. So unclaimed property is, is, is huge for us. In 2021 alone, our office gave Hoosiers back $50 million that was owed to them. So I was at the state fair this summer, and I was working on a Friday, and the state fair queen came to the booth and said, hey, my dad asked me if you could check and see if he has any money on unclaimed property. He thinks he does. So as I, I brought her over to the laptop, and I looked it up for, it took, takes about 35 seconds to, to look up your name and look up the situation, and we found 40,000, nearly $40,000 for him and his family. And she was, she said, I thought that was the case, and he did too. Unfortunately for me is I left on Friday night, and he come back on Saturday and bought everybody dinner. But I didn't, I didn't get any of that dinner, but that's okay. You're not supposed to take it anyway, so, as a state employee. Last but not least is our office is working a great deal on identity theft. It's happening every single day. It may happen to your debit card or your credit card. But we have a plan here that, that we, available to everybody, and I'll leave this here with the, the clerk treasurer to, for, for the residents. And if you ever need any more, you can just contact me, and I'll bring them out. But, and, and then here comes, online dating scams are huge right now, because the holidays are coming up. Everybody kind of wants a date, apparently, but, you know, I, I am available. But on, online dating scams are a big deal. And people get scammed all the time by giving their phone number to somebody, and then they can, can use some information from the phone number to get into bank accounts and get into those kind of things. So I will leave that well, as well for you. Please don't, talking of scams, the IRS or the Indiana Attorney Revenue Service, or Social Security will never call you. Will never call one of us. They'll send us a letter first with a code on that letter, and then you can call those folks back and give them the, the code, and that'd be one form of security, and then they'll ask you some other things. But remember, do not take a phone call from anybody that says they're from the Social Security Administration, or the IRS, or the Indiana Internal Revenue Service. So that's about all I have, but I'd like to answer any questions that anybody might, may have. All the spirit back here. They might have a question.
I appreciate the work on the phone. It's been a problem for a number of years now. My area of concern, and the area of concern of most residents in Lake County would be, what are we going to do about letting out people that have shot someone? We let them out on bail, and then they go and shoot somebody else. It's been in the paper four times this year, just locally in Lake County, that's happened. We need to stop letting them out on bail for violent crimes.
Well, the, the Attorney General supports only the prosecutors in the county. We back up the prosecutors. We don't have a say on what happens with, with what the prosecutors decide to do. But we, we do back the prosecutors if they need our help. We are not the attorney for everybody in the state. We're the attorney for the counties, and for state legislators, and, and the, and the governor, so. I, I can't really answer your question. It's not something that we deal with. It's the local prosecutor. I understand, sir. We can talk offline if you'd like to.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cannon, for being here this evening.
No problem, guys. Thank you all very much.
You know, Mr. Cannon, I definitely want to make a comment, too.
Sure.
I do want to, you know, please pass along to the Attorney General that we are grateful for his efforts to protect our personal freedoms, our property, protect us against scammers. I know that he was recently talking about maybe getting more jurisdiction over local corruption. I, I support those issues. And especially, I want to make sure we point out his, his proactive stance with protecting our parents' rights in terms of schools. So please pass along. We're grateful for his effort.
Certainly will. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I will get it to him. Ma'am, I'll leave this right over here for you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Item number C was Town Councilman Dan Dornell, who could not be here this evening. So unfortunately, well, actually, I just, would just like to read a statement. On behalf of the town council, the residents of St. John, we'd like to extend our gratitude, not only to Councilman Dan Dornell, but also to the entire Lake County Council for the recent approval of $250,000 to the town of St. John. I know we didn't have to get anything, but Mr. Dornell came forward with something for St. John from those ARPA funds, and we say thank you. Not only was it a nice gesture, but something that all of St. John residents can say thank you for, and continued support for our town. That is all I have on that. We'll go to item seven, number one. Ordinance 1781, which is our budget. We'll start with item A, which is our civil town budget. Joe?
So tonight, the town council has before it the 2023 budget for final approval. The budget sets forth the course for the town, defines our priorities and services provided to the community. I want to say thank you to the town council, clerk treasurer, Senator Dalton's Trista Hudson, Daniel Dalton, Steve Dalton, all the department heads, my office staff are working hard to get the budget completed. It is a balance of available resources to assist us in providing high-quality services to the residents, businesses, and visitors of St. John. The civil budget presented for final approval is $25,693,313. In the words of many, there is no perfect budget. We will need additional appropriations. Yes, we will. Have we done this in the past? Yes, we have. Are we going to do this in the future? Yes, we will. As things change within our town, our town's needs change, our goals change. Revenue may shrink, expenses may need to be trimmed. We will be financially aware of what's going on. We will be flexible to that change, and we will work together to ensure the success of our community. To do anything different is failure, and that's not an option. The budget includes a 5% pay raise for our employees and staff as a cost of living and market rate adjustment. This also includes our elected officials. New positions included within this budget, there are seven full-time and two part-time positions. There are two full-time new police officers, two new full-time firefighters, one full-time code enforcement officer, one full-time parks recreation coordinator, one full-time public works crew member. There are also one part-time parks and recreation specialist, and one part-time clerk class two for the clerk treasurer's office. We also are seeking another $1 million community crossing grant, and performing about $2.2 million worth of roadwork for that. Senator Dalton recommends the approval of this budget as amended. That's all I have.
Okay. Questions or comments on the civil budget?
Are there any, are there any changes to this? The sanitary, there's no changes to that. Everything's like it said?
On the sanitary, that's correct.
Right, and then?
We're doing, just, let's do civil first, one at a time, otherwise we can't get our approvals done right, so. But questions on the civil budget? If not, we have approved this, first reading was October 12th.
Okay, wait, wait. I, I got questions on, on that. I, I was looking at something different.
Okay.
So the salary ordinance, assuming we have a salary ordinance, if we're going to do the budget. I don't, I didn't get, I asked Joe yesterday, and I think he was.
Salary ordinance is a separate ordinance altogether. Salary ordinance will be presented in November. Actually, in fact, I'll probably have that out to you in two weeks, so you can go through that.
All right, that's fine. And now, all, all the employees are getting a 5% raise, basically, right?
Correct.
Are there any employees getting more than 5%?
On a pay raise, no.
So, and, cause in that, when I was virtual, when I was in Florida, you were talking there was going to be $125,000 for this building. And you said there was cement work in that, and then there's more than cement work. And then we're going to do other, we're going to do remodeling or whatever.
Correct.
But we, I don't think we've ever discussed.
We're not going to be, we're not going to be moving out of this building anytime soon.
Right, so are there any, is there any employee that's going to make more money than 5%?
I would, I would say, wait to see the salary ordinance, and you can draw your own conclusion, but I can tell you, all of the, all of the employees, excuse me, all of the employees are receiving a 5% pay raise. That is correct.
Right, but then there might be some that are getting more.
No, not necessarily.
Well, it'd be yes or no, I would think, but that's, you know, we can, we can end that discussion.
That'll be on the salary ordinance, Wayne.
Pardon?
That'll be on the salary ordinance for, for budgeting.
It, it seemed like when they were doing that, and that $125,000 came up, and there was another $20,000, and there was $25,000 for furniture, and we want to do a big remodeling thing. I don't think that's, that's appropriate. I mean, we can probably look at it and do some of that stuff, but make it cheaper. And like, like I discussed, man, we can paint over wallpaper rather than tear it all down. I think that's, that might be something to look at, because it's easy to spend somebody's money if it's not yours.
Right, I totally agree with that.
And, and now, I'm not, you know, trying to put you under the bus or anything like that. I'm just trying to get it out there. And, and then if I go, go through this some more, all the department heads are here. If you look at, on page three, normally, we go through $17,000 a year, and then went up to $275,000. Why that? Why, why do we go up so high?
What, what are we looking at? I'm sorry.
We're on, we're on the city council, town board, and it's, I guess it's 101, general fund. Look on page three.
I'm on page three. I'm trying to see what you're looking at.
That was the money I think we get back from the gross levy appeal, right? The 270?
That, I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
You're looking at line item 2390?
Yeah. I don't see a 2390 on there. Oh, wait a minute, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry.
That's, Councilman Schilling is exactly right. That's what that's for.
That, that's from the levy, but, you know, why, why that much money? I mean, from 17,000 and?
It, it's appropriated in that line item.
And then we'll go to page five. Under billing department, we have office equipment for 11,500. What, what kind of office equipment are we getting? And that's under 5443.
Sergio, did you want to speak on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the request for the office equipment includes additional computer for the full-time code enforcement officer. They need equipment to work off of, as well as if we move forward with the ARPA funds for updated software to help with getting information out, we need additional equipment. I think we budgeted for three tablets to be out in the field, but realistically, we may need five or six.
Cause there's no, there's no explanation. This is office equipment, and I just wanted to find out what that was all about.
Absolutely. Is anything else?
Copier.
And a copier?
Oh, we eventually wanted a copier, yes.
Oh, another one. Yeah, we're going to go through the copy machine thing again. All right, and then we go to the next page, on page six. Same thing with the fire department. There's $5,000, but it doesn't really stay for what? This is equipment. And I know Chief is here.
I'm just trying to follow my, sorry, my, were office equipment or?
It says machinery, equipment, and vehicles. Or equipment, but it's equipment in a big column.
Give me one sec to make sure I'm.
He's looking at 1443.
It's about halfway, a little more than halfway down on the, it's $5,000.
What was the, what was the line again? The last four, I'm sorry?
1443.
On page one?
Page six.
Oh, page six, okay. 1443. That's our office's equipment, too. So we have chairs that haven't been replaced since we've been in that building. So we have a conference room, on the day room, all the chairs that we sit at the dining room table haven't been replaced downstairs.
I just want to.
No, no, that, that's.
It should be earmarked for that, and then we don't use it for something else.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we got, on page eight, for the parks department, we have $7,000 and $5,000 on two different lines. And that's 6435, triple zero. And it's right above the dark and black where it says circuit breaker. And I think our parks guy is here, our superintendent. Is there anything special for that? It just says other improvements.
It's on page eight.
On page eight.
Under other capital outlays.
That particular one, yeah, the 100, that, that mainly is for Civic Park, mainly.
For Civic Park?
Yeah, yeah.
For, what, what are we going to do in Civic Park?
Well, improvements for, what I was looking at was improvements for the pavilion, some, you know, painting, possible burnet, burnetting for the pavilions, stuff with the, even the fences I was looking at, the outfield fences.
Get that fence on, on the east side. Looks terrible.
Yeah, but, yeah, yeah, the T-ball.
It's all overrun with trees.
Yeah, over, over by the T-ball field, too, and stuff, but.
And, and the concession stand was just painted like two years ago, so.
Uh, well, I was.
Inside needs to be painted.
Okay, yeah, inside. Yeah, I was talking more about the pavilions and the stuff, the two that we have there, since one's a, you know, they're rented out, too, and stuff, so.
And the 5,000 is for Civic Park, too? Possibly?
Uh, yeah, cause that's, yeah, the 110, that's, that's also, that's, those are more of the Civic Park appropriation budget line items.
And then, let's see. Oh, that's wrong, wrong department. Did they do the, did they okay the electric already for Civic Park?
For the basketball court?
They, they, they have the basketball court, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the, the poles are being ordered, so it should be soon. I think it's a couple of weeks, two, two weeks ago, when they were, everything was placed as an order line and stuff.
All right.
All the parts are actually in. We're waiting on scheduling to get it installed.
And then, who's the electrician? Austin?
Yes. Yes, Austin.
All right, thank you. And then on the, this is for probably MVH. And I think Joe, there's $52,000 here, and that's the.
What, what line you're looking at?
On page 11, I'm sorry. The top one on the top of the page, it's got $52,000. Is the $52,000, that's for 2024, but there was an email that came through. They took, did they take that off?
It's off, yes.
Because I seen it in red, but I didn't know.
It's off.
I just want to make sure, so that's off. And then we go back to page 12. And there's another thing for park and recreation. Don't want to bring them back up there, but it's for $30,000 for motor equipment. What are we planning to do with motor equipment? Are we getting another truck, Mike?
Not another truck, but, but look into possible, I was looking at possible, some ballfield equipment to take care of Laramie Park, the ballfield over there.
But then it wouldn't be on the motor equipment. Wouldn't be, have a different title, wouldn't it?
No, not necessarily. I mean.
But baseball equipment and motor equipment would be, I, I, and I'm just asking a question. That would be different.
Well, like machine equipment, that.
So like a batting cage type?
No, not necessarily a batting cage, but stuff to take care of the field, dragging, different types of.
All right, like something like that, the chain or whatever they put behind.
Correct, correct, yeah, yeah, because we, this year, we did a few things over, over there.
Right.
It'd be nice to have that maintained nicer, for sure.
Right, and that can't cost 30,000 for that, that, the drag behind it.
No, yeah, I mean, no, no, but that would be some, right, correct. I mean, other stuff tied in with it and stuff, but, and then, you know, the idea was possibly to, you know, hopefully rent it out, too.
Well, yeah, that, that helps, too.
Yeah, yeah.
And then I think that's it. And then I, I got one comment for the fire department, and public works, and maybe the police department. We had that fire on Manor Drive, and I want to thank the fire. We had that fire on Manor Drive, and I want to thank the fire department for doing a good job since you're here as a chief. Chief Flores, if your men were out there, I know some of them were when I went out there. Bob Davis, I think you had, uh, some good comments from some of the people, or, or the fire department, I'm sorry. So you, you gentlemen did a nice, a nice job. Thank you. Made our town look good.
Any other questions or comments on the civil town budget? And I will look for motion to adopt ordinance seventeen eighty-one A, civil town budget on second reading.
So moved.
Thank you, Mike. Is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. That is approved five to zero. And we move to.
Seventeen eighty-one.
Seventeen eighty-one B, which is the sanitary budget. Joe?
Um, as this was presented on first reading, there, there were no changes on this one.
Any questions or comments on the sanitary budget? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve ordinance seventeen eighty-one B, sanitary budget on second reading.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that? Thank you, Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. That is approved five to zero. Move to seventeen eighty-one C, which is our water district budget. Joe?
Um, same thing on this one. As it was presented on first reading, it was, there have been no changes on that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on seventeen eighty-one C, the water district budget? Hearing none, I am, I will entertain a motion to, um, adopt ordinance seventeen twenty-one C on second reading.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. That is approved five to zero. I know we've had a number of changes here recently on the civil budget. Just want to thank Joe and Beth both for working on this and giving us a balanced budget. Thank you very much. We will go on to item number eight A, financial matters of the corporation, RTPs. We have fourteen RTPs. Beth?
Yes, you have fourteen RTPs totaling a hundred and seventy thousand ninety-nine dollars. That included one RTP from Image Trend, one from Reichelt Plumbing, one from Hall Signs, one from Boonder Electric, one from Dell, one from Public Safety Direct, two from SF Mobile Vision, one from Pure Hockey, one from Fire Service, two from Phil and Sons, one from Complete Restoration, and one from Wild Goose Chase.
Okay. Questions or comments on the RTPs?
I got a few comments. Um, Reichelt Plumbing is on there. And they did assist us with some check valves so we could help with, uh, new construction and put meters in. And I want to thank, uh, Reichelt Plumbing and Rob Seuss for that, uh, because we call all over the country. It's hard to get stuff. And they were able to have some in stock and they, they had some coming in. And I, I see we're going to do, uh, outdoor hockey for the Civic Park tennis court. And I don't know if, if Mike asked a question, I'm, I'm sure he did. Will that, putting that ice rink on top of that tennis court ruin the tennis court? I know it's an fenced area, but we spent forty or fifty thousand on the tennis court. They did a good job with it. Will that hurt or harm that in any way?
No, it won't. Uh, it, those are, they're made, um, I can send you a link to the Pure Hockey stuff. You can see the kind of.
Right. I, I'm just asking. I've seen that on there.
Uh, no, it won't. It's, it's designed, this, the forty by eighty one is designed for a.
They put up boards and then a.
Yeah, they're little like three-foot boards, um, and they're kind of puzzled piece together. And then there's a locking system that holds everything up, and then it's a tarp that basically goes on top. Um, you, it'll be about three inches of water in the middle. Tennis court's slope about five inches, so this.
Okay.
The ends will have about seven inches of water, so, um, so it, it should be fine. I mean, they actually recommend no more than two inches, um, of, of water, but it just depends on how much it all, you know, self-levels and stuff.
Okay.
With the court, but no, um, I have done it before, um, so I have, I had experience with it and.
Okay.
It's been, it's, um, it's been good.
All right, well, thank you.
Really started, sounded like a great addition for families.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like a lot of fun.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be fun.
Long as we have cool weather, right?
Right, right.
We, we've had that before at Prairie West, and it, it worked a little bit, but then it was, it ended up to be warm out and it was just a big slush pool.
Yeah, my, my plan is to put it up pretty much before Christmas, and then.
Right.
Historically, January, we've had the freezing weather, at least the past few years, so.
Right.
January, February, maybe in the March.
Hopefully it'll work out. I mean, all you can do is try.
Yeah.
Yeah, all you can do is try. And then we got, uh, Phil and Son on here for two different, uh, things for locks. Uh, and we're trying to prove this, but I was in the parks department the other day. The work's already done, so how do we do the work and now we're going to pay the bill?
The work was already approved because the, the amount was under the four thousand dollar threshold.
Well, if you add the two, it's ten thousand dollars, and one is six thousand.
They're separate projects. They're not the same.
I thought that.
One's being billed to the parks, one's being billed to the general fund.
But again, it, it, it should have been brought to us first. We okay it, and then we just do it. And the work shouldn't be done. I mean, that's not good. It's not a good practice, right, Joe?
I, I would agree going forward. That would be a best practice.
That's fine.
And that's it.
Okay, anybody else? So do I have a motion to approve the RTPs for one hundred seventy thousand ninety-nine dollars?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose say nay.
I was an aye on that one.
Okay, so we're approved five to zero. Um, Joe, before we go on.
Yeah.
Do we have any more need for our directors of all of our departments?
I don't believe so, no.
Let them go home.
Gentlemen, I want to thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Um, and you are dismissed.
Not unless you're bored and want to.
Hey, welcome to stay.
You've got nothing, nothing better to do.
Thank you, gentlemen.
See you, guys.
Thank you.
Well, you can't read.
Yeah, sorry, Jason.
Okay, item number two on new business is, um, our accounts payable voucher. We have before you the voucher, the amount of one million nine hundred sixty-six dollars. I'm sorry, one million nine hundred and sixty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and nine, and forty-one cents. Sorry. Questions on the docket?
Can I make a comment?
You may.
So I do want to thank, uh, Beth. Uh, we worked together last week and, um, she very kindly sent me, uh, I was able to mark up the docket, and she sent me the invoices I requested. I was able to do that over the weekend and on Monday morning and look over all the invoices, um, that I thought necessary. I'm very thankful for you sending them over. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And I will entertain a motion to approve the docket for one million nine hundred sixty-six thousand seven hundred sixty-seven dollars and forty-one cents.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Support for that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. That is approved five to zero. Item number three, motion, or invoice from Red Bud Landscaping. Joe?
So this was actually part of a, a, a larger project. One of the trees actually died. Um, it wasn't Rosebud's fault that it died, um, so they replaced the tree. Um, Beth thought it would be best, since this was kind of a bigger, uh, project, to add that to, um, this is a separate motion so that it, way it doesn't look like we're trying to do something, you know, shady.
Okay.
Is that a pine?
Yeah, I'm, just a shady tree, yeah.
Was it a shade tree or a pine tree?
It was one of the, the trees in the roundabout that they were, they replaced the tree.
Juniper or whatever.
So we're just approving six hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Correct, yeah, that was part, but it was like, like I said, it was part of the bigger project.
Okay.
So.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. That is approved five to zero. Item number four, the contract with Wild Goose Chase. Joe?
Yeah, so this is, I'm, sorry, Mike had left a little bit early. Um, this was for, um, bird netting for the pavilions. One of the things that we're going to be taking a look at is getting the pavilions netted so that we don't have birds living in them. So, um, since this exceeds the four thousand dollar threshold, it's before the council for the council president to sign.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the, uh, contract with Wild Goose for the amount of seven thousand four hundred twenty dollars?
So moved.
Second, I mean, is there a support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Questions or comments?
Wasn't there Wild Goose on the request to purchases?
There was.
There is.
But this is to sign the, the, the contract that's associated.
Is it, is it better to do the netting, or could we use, um, uh, plywood and just go up so far and then block it off on the, where the eaves come down?
Yeah, but we're, we're talking where it's, you got the pavilions where it's going up.
Way up in the top?
They're going up in there, so the netting will keep them out of there.
All right, okay.
It'll still keep it open.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, so I've got a motion. Um, would you consider, uh, amending that motion to authorize the town council president to sign? For the miss, for the motion man?
Yes, I, I will agree with that.
And the supporter?
Yes.
And I'll second it.
Okay, all right, thank you then. Um, all in favor of approving this contract signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. That is approved five to zero. Item number five, uh, payment to milestone. Joe?
So this is a progress payment for the, uh, CCMG work. Um, this has been signed off by the, um, by Haas. Um, we still have a two hundred and three thousand dollar holdback on this, uh, for retainage until the project is completed and they're ready to close.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the payment to milestone in the amount of one million eight hundred thirty-one thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-four cents.
So moved. I'll second.
Thank you, Mike. Second, thank you, Brian. Questions or comments?
This is to finish the payment, the roads that were already done, right?
Yeah, this is for the, the roads that they.
Right, because I got a phone call today and they asked, uh, they were looking at Riverboat, and they thought, we, we bought a boat or something. I'm like, no. That's a fund that we pull out of, so I had to explain it to them. I'm like, and MVH is another fund that we pull out of, like the other two.
Yeah.
Uh, CCD and that, so, all right.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. That is approved five to zero. All right, H B ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance seventeen eighty-two. Joe?
Beth, this was, this was something that was recommended by the SBOA. Did you want to speak on it? Or are we going to?
No, we're, we'll probably not speak about it until after the report is public. But even without the state board of accounts, we had been discussing for.
Right.
Many months, the need to, um, separate our TIF funds. So that's what this ordinance was doing.
So this ordinance is more of a, if I might, a clerical issue, um, to kind of separate those accounts. Um, you added the age-restricted, uh, housing in January, so, um, this ordinance will do that. Uh, after having some discussion with Beth, uh, earlier today, um, I think we, we want to further clarify section one and two. So I know your agenda talks about potentially adopting this on first reading. I, I would ask that you just hear it tonight.
Right.
Set it for the second, uh, and then Beth and I will work to make sure that the, the language works not only for the purposes of, of the, the town, but like in terms of her accounting purposes for when she gets the money from the county, that it can go directly into the right accounts, so.
Okay, so you want this on first reading only then?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Um, questions on the ordinance? And I will entertain a motion to consider ordinance seventeen eighty-two on first reading only.
All moved.
Thank you, Mike. Support for that. Thank you, Brian. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. That is approved five to zero. Ordinance seventeen eighty-three. Joe?
Um, I'm going to kind of defer this to the attorney to kind of go over the legalese of this, if you would.
So, uh, ordinance seventeen eighty-three is the ordinance that when Jack was here, he was talking about, um, that set up your awards, which have to be done essentially once every ten years after the census.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, the version you have tonight, um, is looking for the exhibits, which we couldn't attach until you kind of articulated to Jack which one of those options. Um, this has to be done by the end of the year. You have the meeting tonight. You'll have a meeting again in November, um, November twenty-first, I'm sorry, December twenty-first is the practical deadline to have this done by, so, um, again, if you could hear this on first reading tonight, um, Jack will, uh, craft the legal descriptions to match uh, the option that you've in, at least preliminarily indicated, and then in November, and if there's a problem, it can be amended. Again, you still have a little bit of lead time, although we're, we're starting to run close to the deadline.
So, so do we want to include option number one in the first reading, or it's not necessary?
If that's, that could be the motion, to hear it, uh, adding in option one.
Okay. Um, well, let's do that. Let's get a motion. Let's get it on the table. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance seventeen eighty-three on first reading only?
No, you want to hear it. You want to adopt it, right. You're going to hear it tonight.
Mm-hmm.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. Questions or comments on our redistricting map? Um, option number one? Or comments? Any other way? No?
I don't have any comments.
Okay. All right. So then we want a motion to adopt ordinance, I'm sorry, not adopt, to consider ordinance seventeen eighty-three on first reading.
Right.
Okay. So do I have a motion to consider ordinance seventeen eighty-three on first reading only?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Support for that?
Second.
You have a question?
Yes, I do. So that, that includes option one in that?
Yes, that would be.
Where, where do I see that? It, it's not in, it's not in the language, because I didn't know that until tonight.
Because we didn't section one pick.
Right, so.
So that's what this language is.
So you see where it says, yeah, section one, uh, see attached legal descriptions? So that's what Jack will do, and what will do is the exhibit will be the legal description, this map followed by the legal description.
And this will be a motion to consider on first hearing, um, with option one.
Okay, just making sure I'm clear.
Yes, yes, tonight.
So we pick it.
Okay, I'll, I'll still second then, thank you.
Yeah, so it's the first reading only on option number one. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Say nay. That approves five to zero. Okay. Resolution twenty-two-two dash ten dash twenty-six. Uh, let's just go to Beth or Joe?
I can, I can speak on it. So the town council appropriated two point one million, or approximately half of the allocation for the fiscal year, uh, twenty-twenty-two budget, uh, which, you know, rightfully the clerk treasurer advised that, uh, we did not have to appropriate additional funds for this, so, um, therefore, at the recommendation of Senator Dalton, the recommendation transferring the funds from the specific fund of two, two, four, zero, two, um, these would be specifically allocating the three hundred thirty thousand for the fire equipment and the eight hundred fifty-three thousand five forty-three seventy-five for the West Eighty-Fifth improvements.
Okay.
Under whatever the, I, I think he asked about specific fund numbers or, or something like that. If you had any, you know, disagreement with those for the line items on that, Beth?
No, it's fine. I mean, no, it's fine.
Okay. So do I have a motion to, uh, approve resolution twenty-two-two dash ten dash twenty-six?
All moved.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Brian. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. That is approved five to zero. Item number C one, to grant a zoning change to Cannon's addition eighty-one sixty-seven Wicker Avenue. Joe?
So on September seventh, the, uh, planning commission unanimously approved a. So on September seventh, the, uh, planning commission unanimously approved a favorable recommendation, uh, to the town council for the zoning change from a C two to an R one single family. This lot has been subdivided to allow the property adjacent to US forty-one to remain as a commercial property, while the rear two acres of that will become R one. And Mr. Cannon is here, if you wanted to say something?
No.
No, never mind, sit down.
So, and I don't mean to be curt, but, but a, as we've discussed, so, uh, you get this recommendation, the certification from the body below, right, and it's your job as the council to kind of review the.
And he's already spoken on the matter.
And if Mr. Cannon spoke, then I'd have to reopen and let the entire public speak on it, so, um, we've been real good about kind of maintaining, just looking at the record.
Right.
Plus, he's been before the planning commission half of his life.
And, and got married in that time, too.
Yeah, he did, congratulations.
Okay. Questions or comments? With no questions or comments, I look for a motion to grant the zoning change on Cannon's Edition at eighty-one sixty-seven Wicker Avenue.
So moved.
To rezone from C two to R one single-family residential.
So moved.
Thank you, Mike, support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. That is approved five to zero. Uh, item number nine, reports and correspondence, Beth?
Um, I gave all of you a copy of the Christmas in the Park brochure, these just came back from R and B today. Um, they are planned to go in the utility bills on November first. I do have a couple extra copies with me, if anyone's interested in checking it out early, um, but everybody should receive a copy of this November first, or if you're paperless, you'll receive it in the, um, emailed version. We're looking forward to a successful Christmas in the park this year. Events aren't too different, we did do a, a few different things, but it's pretty status quo as far as what it's, what it's been, you know, the last seven years, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Joe?
Um, yes, thank you. So on behalf of the St. John Police Department, I'm asking all drivers to be cautious on Halloween during trick-or-treating, so please be safe. That's all I have.
Okay. All right, uh, council, Wayne?
Other than the SCADA system for the sanitary is halfway done now, I think, they're on, they're stationed six or seven, well, not the number, but the, the amount that they're doing, so they're about halfway done, I think by the end of November they'll be done, and that'll all be complete.
Okay. Mike?
I have nothing.
Mr. Aurelio?
Nothing.
Brian?
I think we're, I'm per, I'm done.
Okay. The only thing I've got is just, uh, just an announcement that changing the trick-or-treating hours, um, we've changed the trick-or-treat hours, um, and the new hours will be from four to seven, I give a little more trick-or-treating time in the daylight. I mean, that is all I have. Um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.